Yeah, really. She had an almost, she had an almost the other day.
It was so scary.
We don't, we shouldn't.
That's the minutes from the, the minutes from the.
We're running a different show this year.
This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bruno? Yeah.
I did hear.
Okay. Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember DePantholous?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston? Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Samuelson, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to open publics, the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Just before we get started, if everybody could, if I could just remind everybody to please speak into your microphone or as loud as you can so that everybody can hear us. Does anyone have any communications to offer? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening. How are you? I just have two things. First of all, Plenary Board will be meeting next Wednesday at 6:30 PM for the reorganization. Also, next Thursday, the Historical Society will be having a swing in, which I'm honored to do, for another executive board at seven o'clock PM at the Crab Chop. And that'll be it.
That's it?
That's it. Real short tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Frost?
Nothing.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Does anyone have any committee reports to offer? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, December 15, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Ordinance number one.
Ordinance number one of 2023 and ordinance amending ordinance number five of 2022 and ordinance of the city of Summers Point, County of Atlantic, New Jersey, establishing the rates, fees, rents, and other charges of the city of Summers Point Sewer Utility.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is the first reading of this ordinance, so we will be open for public comment at the next meeting. Ordinance number two.
Ordinance number two of 2023 and ordinance amending ordinance 29 of 2015 and ordinance four of 2016 and amending and supplementing section five of ordinance five of 2001 to adjust the sewer connection fee charges and repealing all ordinance heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is also the first reading of this ordinance, so public comment will be at the next meeting. Resolutions, we'll move on to that. Resolution number 36, please.
Resolution number 36 of 2023 authorizing purchase on state contract for 2023 Ford F-250 pickup truck and equipment.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. I'm sorry. Are we open these, still open to the, open to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, yes, we, we just weren't reading them all in anymore at the beginning. We're just gonna open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's why it's on. Okay. Could I have a motion to open to the public for comment on resolutions only?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. May I have a motion to close, please?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam President?
I have a motion on the floor. Can we finish our vote first?
Sure, go ahead.
Motion to close. I just need a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment.
Got a question for you. On the purchase for a Ford F-250 pickup truck, has there been any consideration to look at a electric vehicle? In terms of getting a gas vehicle, is it possible? I, I don't know the answer to that question. And it says equipment. I know, don't know what other equipment, but it would be, if we save money long-term in terms of an electric vehicle, it might, my.
Are we out, we're out? Yeah. Look, yes. Let's just, let me get the motion.
I understand.
When I ask for comments.
Okay.
Let me introduce it.
Okay.
When I ask for comments, they.
All right, all right, all right.
Comment.
I think I'm still in Florida. All right.
Maybe I need to talk into my microphone so you can hear me.
All right.
All right. Let's, resolution number 36.
Resolution number 36 of 2023 authorizing purchase on state contract for 2023 Ford F-250 pickup truck and equipment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, I think I'll have a comment, okay? I'm just curious about this in terms of if we want to look at saving money long-term, future, EV vehicle, electrical vehicles are becoming more of a standard. They do have trucks, Ford does have trucks that are electric. Would it make any sense to consider something like that? I understand we're buying off a state contract. It's probably less money, but are there any incentives or some way in which we could purchase, you know, get a purchase of an EV vehicle to see how it works out for the city?
Sure. So the short answer is, yeah, we're always, I mean, an electric vehicle is always under consideration.
Right.
The longer answer is, right now, the city doesn't have anything that would allow us to charge that vehicle with a, a charging station or anything like that.
Right.
I will say that it's something that we discussed, looking at in this year's budget. Put money in for that. There are, my understanding is, there are some grand dollars out there for those charging stations. But, you know, that hasn't been fully vetted yet.
Okay, all right. All right, that's fine. I understand. Thank you very much.
And it's also difficult to get equipment right now, right, through the, it was very limited as to when you could get this, right?
Yeah, well, and we've discussed it before, but there are grand dollars out there for the charging stations, but they're, as of a lot of technology, anyone familiar with their cell phone, you know, the lightning charging, you know, flash charging things. So those are hard to get at the moment. They're also much more expensive. So you can get one of these older legacy charging stations that cost roughly $30,000. But if you take five, six hours.
It's not functional for the, yeah.
So it's not a no, but it's something that needs to be vetted.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 36 is approved. Number 37.
Resolution number 37 of 2023 authorizing member participation in the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
The only comment I have is that anytime we can join a cooperative, it's usually beneficial to the municipality. Gives us another option in purchasing, I guess in this case, police equipment more so than anything else.
Yeah, this specific co-op, we're actually having trouble acquiring police vehicles even on state contract. Literally, there's windows that are a couple days, weeks. My understanding of this co-op is one of the only places that we can acquire the vehicles right now.
That's excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 37 is approved. Number 38.
Resolution number 38 of 2023 appointment of co-administerable planner, namely, Cloweyers Engineering and Design, Inc.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 38 is approved. Number 39, please.
Resolution number 39 of 2023 amending resolution number 24 of 2023 appointing members to the Economic Development Advisory Commission.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Oh, here it is. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number 39 is approved. Number 40, please.
Resolution number 40 of 2023 supporting the Center for Family Services Grant Application.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 40 is approved. Number 41.
Resolution number 41, 2023 change order number two, contract number 110, fiscal year 2021 municipal aid, West Atlantic Avenue, Phase Two.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? I just want to come, I'm understanding as all these change orders were actually spending, I forgot to ask you if you had any comments.
That's okay.
But we're actually spending less money. These are, that's.
All the change orders together are in that decrease.
A decrease in, okay, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 41 is approved. Number 42.
Resolution number 42 of 2023 change order number one, contract number 103 fiscal year 19, bikeways, Maze Landing Road improvements.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
I'm new to your council meetings. Did I have a public discussion on this earlier? Or can I just ask you a question real quick on this?
You can't ask right now. You can during, when we open to public comment towards the end, but I forget where I was.
We have a, we have a first and a second for resolution 42.
Any comments on resolution 42? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 42 is approved. Number 43.
Resolution number 43 of 2023 change order one, contract number 111, 2021 storm wear repairs.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 43 is approved. Number 44.
Resolution number 44, 2023 change order one, contract number 118, 2022, storm wear improvements, phase one rebid.
May I have a motion, please?
So, so moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 44 is approved. Number 45.
Resolution number 45 of 2023 change order one, contract number 108, fiscal year 2021 municipal aid, West Atlantic Avenue, Phase One.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 45 is approved. I did forget Mr. Snyder here. Did you have any comments that you needed to, that you wanted, any, any reports you wanted to make tonight?
I was just gonna report that the 2021 road program paving has been completed. That was done between Christmas and years. We're lucky that we got that in before the weather got too cold. Other than that, we're just, most of these resolutions are to close out existing jobs from last year so we could get final payment from the state for the grants.
Great.
Great job.
Fine job.
Yeah, pretty good job.
Does anyone have any old business to discuss?
Council President, it's New Year, but we've kicked around a lot of issues over the past two thousand, in 2022, but I'd like to see this council move forward with at least three projects. Every time I go to a store or someplace or some restaurant or something, I always have someone coming up and asking me about, when are you gonna resolve the short-term rentals? When are you gonna resolve the parking issue? I even get phone calls on that as well as people coming up. And I know there's been discussions about reorganizing the Recreation Board, and I think that those, in my mind, those things are three priorities. I think we should try to get done in the first quarter of, of this New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Definitely a priority. Any other old business? Or none? Any new business? The committee assignments, everyone has them in your packet, and they will also be posted on the website. Do you have one, Tom?
And Madam President?
Yes.
Just to dovetail off of what Councilman Diller said in looking at the committee assignments, my favorite committee, short-term rentals, is not listed here. I know that was somewhat of a ad hoc.
Right.
Committee. I'm assuming that's gonna remain as-is, and noting that it's a priority for Mr. Dill as well for me, and, and I know at the last working meeting, we had recommendations. So just wondering, again, I'd like to see an expedited schedule on that. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. And yes, I felt it was best to leave that since that committee has already done all the research and so, yes. Any other new business? Hearing none. Mr. Frost, discussion of the bills.
Yes, this evening, we have a bill list in the amount of $3,558,61.11. We have two record payments, one dated December 30th, in the amount of $4,481.63. And one dated December 23rd, in the amount of $27,703.11.
Could I have a? Anybody have any questions about the bill list? Okay. Could I have a motion to open for public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for a public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Frisella, and my family has owned a property on DeFeo Ave, 58 DeFeo Lane, since 1989, and I've been the owner of that property since, I guess about 12 years now. I'm looking to purchase some other property in Summers Point. My wife and myself also have a property in Angarbor Township. I'm looking to establish a business in town, and I wanted to introduce myself to the council. And one of the questions I had was some Maze Landing Road, because I'm looking at some properties on that road, and I'm curious if that bike lane would require the expansion of the road or if you're gonna just adapt the road to bike lanes as they are.
Well, Maze Landing Road is a county road, so they would be the ones to, yeah, we don't.
The bike lane's already done.
The bike lanes are done, yeah.
So there's no effect on the.
No, it's not gonna change what it is.
Beautiful. I'm just looking at some properties and wanna make sure I didn't lose six feet before I got it.
No.
Can't blame you for that.
Yeah, we can't speak for the county, but the bike lanes were just put in, so.
I, I'm blessed to say that I believe in the past year, the county has approved the type of business I'm looking to put in with certain stipulations. So hopefully that will bless me when it comes time to move forward if I'm lucky enough to acquire the land I'm looking at. I happened to meet Mr. Owen at the old-time picnic we had.
Old Days Festival?
Yes. And was talking to a few people there.
Sure.
But thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Hopefully see you soon.
Okay.
Hi, Will Modica, 12 Braddock Drive. I am concerned with the long-term effects of allowing short-term rentals for the residents in our community. There are seminars on YouTube teaching people who want to buy and use homes for short-term rental income to set up an S corporation and tell people they will only use the home for clients while still advertising on Airbnb and other sites. We cannot go to a restaurant without a 30 to 40-minute wait, so I believe our businesses are not benefiting greatly. Instead of controlling short-term rentals, I feel allowing them has eliminated residential zoning and created commercial motel zoning without the same taxes, rules, and regulations that motels in our city have to obey. A petition was circulated to a few streets near an unlawfully operated short-term rental. A significant, if not majority, of residents signed this petition. I believe these signed petitions are a small but effective sample of the true feelings of all your constituents. If you examine these signed petitions, I am hopeful that each of you individually will agree that there are a significant, if not majority, of residents that do not approve of the current short-term rental ordinance. Thank you to the members of the subcommittee who have heard our concerns expressed in previous city council meetings and are trying to address them. Is it true that this ordinance was introduced January 14th and voted on and passed January 28th? If so, two weeks seems like a short time to perform proper due diligence on this matter. For all of your constituents, I am asking each of you individually to reevaluate the current short-term rental ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Leigh Capon-Ganna, 12 Holly Hills Drive. My husband's saying that he had sent everyone an email sometime today, sometime regarding the Airbnb, and I printed it out, and I feel the same way, and I would just like to read a few things, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. Is there any rental units available in Summers Point now and with Morgan Plan? The idea of the Airbnb allowed throughout Summers Point that it zones single-family residential without consideration for established zoning restrictions and possibly illegal. Summers Point gets miniscule income from these Airbnbs that acquires the additional costs associated with short-term rental fees, traffic, cash, et cetera. There has to be consideration for the residents who still want to live, own, maintain, upgrade, and improve their primary residence. Too much business consideration leaves the residents with the burdens that commercial districts have to comfortable, quiet, peaceful living. Let the people vote. Other towns have public questions for the residents to restrict rentals to at least one month in length. There was a petition that had various ideas attached. Most importantly, advertise the ordinance and have a public vote. Please let us decide. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't gonna comment on anything else today.
I'm sorry. We're not, you're only allowed to speak once. I'm sorry. Okay.
Susan Back at 12 Braddock Drive. When I look at Airbnbs in Summers Point, I see listings, three-bedroom homes sleeps 12. That seems like a possible recipe for disaster. It seems like 12 people in a three-bedroom house. Does this exceed the maximum number of tenants allowed? What are the rules? What if a late-night loud party's happening? Who do we contact? As we did experience that last year at 2:00 AM in the morning. Most people in this town aren't aware of the law that was put into effect. Some don't even know what Airbnb short-term rentals are. We're not a dry town like Ocean City that tracks mostly families with children. I feel that the short-term rentals take away from knowing our neighbors, that we look out for each other. An example, with the Airbnb on our street, trash cans were left out on the sidewalk all summer because the owners are away from June till, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. They have another property 5,000 miles away, and that's where they go all summer. So I just felt like I didn't want to watch this property and tell them what to do. At one point, there was feces coming up. It was all over the sidewalk because of the septic system back there. Oh, so then I let them know to contact the owners, and I have to say, the owners immediately called someone, and it was fixed. But if I didn't say anything, it would have backed up. I did watch somebody slip on it because it was about an inch thick, and that's when I had to tell them, you know, contact the owners. I don't know where, I don't know how to contact them. Then even like with the, the trash, the trash cans were out there because they didn't want the renters bringing it, couldn't trust them to put it out, so they left them out in the sidewalk. Then they were had, the recyclers were in a plastic bag, so they weren't picking them up. So I felt like I wanted to tell them, you have to take it out of the plastic bags, and then the one runner, well, we didn't do it. The other renters did it, but they were nice enough, they did take it out. But I just feel like I don't want to have to supervise this house. Doesn't seem right to have to do that, that it's not something I really care to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bruce Lonergan. I'm at 11 Braddock Drive. So Sue's kinda read the issues we, as the neighborhood, have with this property at 10 Braddock Drive. I was here last year, I think it was in August maybe, and I think I passed out pictures of what she's just described. So we were told they were having a hearing because they had violated several ordinances at the end of September. I have heard, and I can't verify this, that basically they got a slap on the hands. They didn't get fined, and they were suspended for six months. They weren't allowed to rent the place. But they weren't gonna rent it over the winter anyway. So my question to you is, what recourse do we have as residents on this street when this place is not kept up? So my question to you is, what recourse do we have as residents on this street when this place is not kept up? And we have to live with it. There's, there was a lot of traffic last summer. They didn't have adequate parking. The owners actually illegally parked their property behind the house. So we had to put up with probably six or seven cars most weekends during the summer. We couldn't park in front of our own houses. And we had to put up with the trash. And I just think city council needs to come up with a plan that has some restrictions and some teeth to manage how these people run it. I mean, I, I, I know there's some people that probably have nice Airbnb's, and they, they're here, and they take care of them, and they make sure that the residents or whoever they're renting to behave. I don't think that's the case with the one at our house or on our street. I mean, you look at it now, they kind of slapped up siding on it. The paint's already kind of running off. I guess the weather, it's all, you know, the blue paint's running into the white. They haven't really done anything more. They just did the bare minimum to get this place up and running. And I'm worried that we're going to have to deal with the same thing again this summer, and I'm not sure what our recourse is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Pearson, five-eight-seven Marks Road, Summers Point. Just a couple of things. The League of Municipalities met in November. I know you went. I asked you to make a note and give a report. So I'm going to give you time, and maybe the next meeting, if I ask the same question again, you can tell what, uh, meetings you attended and what you got out of it, because I know we pay you to go. And I do know that, not this year, but the year before, there was something that I wanted to bring up, but, uh, I passed, and I'll wait and see what you have to say of how the League of Municipalities was in November. Okay, as far as the committee assignments, can I go to City Hall and get a copy of that?
I can get, I can send you a copy, yeah.
Paper copy, yeah, because I have one from two years ago. That's okay, I'll get one. And I wanted to, you, I get up in the morning early and go out from seven to eight for coffee with several people I meet, and I wanted to pass something by you. See where it says Family Services Grant Application? I think, this is just a suggestion, but I think you should pay attention to homeless and mental people in Summers Point. I know that's hard to say, but I see them more and more in various locations for various reasons, the same people over and over again, and I've been hearing rough stories. And if you, if you really pay attention, you'll see that there's more people like that than has ever been before, slowly, more and more. So when you see grant application for family services, you diligent and in good faith should maybe talk to the grant writer and see if there's anything for shelter or whatever. Now, I'm not talking about big and giant, but I'm talking about that you can take care of what is around these streets right now, because it is a little rough, and there is story after story, and you can ask your policeman, and you can find out. You can diligently look into this and maybe make a little bit of a difference. And anyhow, it's just a, you know, a pre thing. So League of Municipalities and the, the homeless, and that's all I have to say for today. Hope you're working on the taxes. Hope we're gonna, you know, not get hit too hard on taxes, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, if, if I could just comment real briefly here.
Can we close?
Why don't we, when I comment at the end, when I ask for further.
Okay.
Just so. Uh, I just need, um, a motion to close, please.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed to public comment. Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can pay the bills. Any comments from govern, the governing body? Mr. McGuigan?
Thank you. Relative to my dear friend, Ms. Pearson, um, the, you know, there, there is, there's a mental health crisis in the country. And, and Summers Point is not immune to that. We see it every day, and, and there's a lot of mental health, uh, problems that we don't see, that aren't homeless on the street, or aren't the people wandering around, uh, that, that our first responders have to deal with. And I obviously won't go into the details, but there was one today that, that had to be dealt with. And the, the problem, and, and you're, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, advocating that, that we do something. We go out and get a grant, or, or we provide some social services. Well, those social services are provided by the county. That really, and, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that's the county's job. I don't want to sidestep that. I mean, it, it is a crisis, and we are counting on some of that burden through first responders. But to advocate that, that we are, uh, you know, it's, it's our job to deal with that, I, I'm not quite sure that's correct. You know, the county does provide those social services, and they are out there, and I know our police department does call upon those social services as time. But for us to pursue grants, and grants do have matching, and grant, you know, a grant doesn't go on forever, uh, that would add to our budget. And in the second part of your, uh, speech there, you talked about the budget, but the first part, you want to add burden to us, and in the second part, we want to manage the taxes, and, and as you know very well, as you're engaged, we're heading into some rough sledding here this fiscal year, so. I'll just say this, that, and that grant, and that the resolution which I, which I asked Madam President to put on the agenda was support of family services, which is a, one of these social services organizations that is applying for a grant that would help people in risk or people in need, so, uh, you know, we'll do what we can, or I'll do what I can to support those kind of things, but we're not going to create social services here in Summers Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Council President, just to, to address the people who spoke about short-term rentals. We do have an ongoing committee associated with coming up with a solution of short-term rentals. We recognize the issues. We recognize the problems. I, for one, and I'm sure every other member of council, excuse me, have read the petitions, received phone calls, and have been addressed in public. And if you're here, all your, under the old business, I said, short-term rentals has a priority. And I'll see that, I'll push this council, but especially the President Council, uh, who is also a member of the committee as well as I, to get, get moving on this and get this done as soon as possible. Just forewarn everybody, we're not going to make everybody happy, but we are searching through all types of ordinances and things of that nature of all municipalities, in trying to come up with something that's comparable and is reasonable for the taxpayers of the community to live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Boy, I was waiting for this. It should have come out.
Yeah, there's Jewish family services too to help out.
Yes, they do.
As well as the American. I just thought I should have addressed the people, so many people came up about it.